General Public Comment. I see none, I will close general public comment. Commissioners, can I get an approval for the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second. Alright, we got a move by Commissioner Kramer and a second by Commissioner Pritzos. Please vote. It's moving. There we go, it's getting there. Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Alright, it passes unanimously. Alright, may I get an approval for, let's see here, for the minutes? Alright. Okay. You gotta read it.
Oh, sorry. I just got back from ending. I move to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission Study Session held on Monday, June 16th, 2025, and the Planning Commission meeting held Wednesday, June 18th, 2025.
Second.
Alright, we got a move by Commissioner Rodriguez Alkins, a second by Commissioner Pritzos. Please vote. Commissioner Reed? Alright, it passes unanimously. Alright, we'll move on to Public Hearing Number One, PCN 25-0008/MPA 25-0002.
Good evening, Chair Austin, members of the Planning Commission, for the record, Kobe Galano, planner with the City of Sparks. Today, we have two requests, a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning for a site located at 2301 Sparks Boulevard. Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I'll cover both these items in one presentation like I did on Tuesday, but it should be noted that two public hearings must be held and each requires a separate motion. On this slide, you can see the subject site located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Sparks Boulevard, No Callahan Drive. The subject site is .79 acres and was developed with a commercial building in 1987, subject to a special use permit that allowed for the operation of a childcare facility for the past 38 years. A mix of single-family, middle-density residential and commercial uses surround the subject site. To the north across Sparks Boulevard are single-family homes and multifamily apartments. Further north is Bering Village Shopping Center, developed with a grocery store, drive-through restaurants and retail uses. To the south are single-family homes in Van Meter Park, and single-family residences are also located to the east and west. The first request for 2301 Sparks Boulevard is a comprehensive plan amendment request that would change the land use designation from intermediate-density residential, or IDR, to commercial. The current intermediate-density residential comprehensive plan land use designation supports a range of uses, including single-family detached, zero lot line, single-family residences, open space and trail systems, schools, religious institutions, private recreation facilities and public facilities. The proposed commercial land use designation supports a wide range of commercial, office, lodging, entertainment, institutional and multifamily residential uses. Pursuant to the City of Sparks Comprehensive Plan, commercial centers should vary in scale and character, but should be within easy walking distance of higher-density land uses such as high-density residential, multifamily residential and intermediate-density residential. Additionally, commercial sites should be located between residential land uses and major streets such as Sparks Boulevard. The second request is to rezone the site from MF2/POD, or multifamily/Planned Unit Development, to PO or Professional Office. Although the proposed commercial land use designation supports a wide range of commercial uses, the proposed PO zoning district supports a more limited range of non-residential uses, including commercial, office, restaurant, institutional uses. The existing PUD overlay was adopted in accordance with Sparks Municipal Code prior to 1980. At that time, SMC allowed for alternative development standards such as setback variation and zero lot line development for attached single-family for new subdivisions utilizing the final map process. However, the subject parcel was created under a parcel map and therefore was not subject to alternative development standards applicable to the adjacent subdivisions that did record with a final map. Moving back into the proposed zoning, when the application was initially submitted, a zone change to C2 was requested. Following discussions with our transportation manager regarding the potential uses that could be heavy traffic generators, staff believes that a rezoning to Professional Office would be more suitable for the site. According to the trip generation letter included in the application, the previous childcare use averaged an estimated 73 a.m. peak hour trips and 74 p.m. peak hour trips, whereas a medical office, for example, is estimated to average 21 a.m. peak hour trips and 26, excuse me, 21 a.m. peak hour trips and 26 p.m. peak hour trips. Other uses were also analyzed in the trip generation letter, which can be seen in Exhibit 6. City transportation staff did review the trip generation letter and has no objections to its findings. On this slide, you can see a comparison of some of the uses permitted in MF2 and PO zoning districts. A complete comparison is in Exhibit 5. As you can see, rezoning the site as proposed would reduce the number of residential uses that may establish on the site and expand the number of commercial-oriented uses that could establish in the future. In accordance with Sparks Municipal Code, there are 35 uses allowed under the proposed PO zone that are not permitted in the MF2, the existing MF2 zone. Examples include, but are not limited to, office, copy centers, medical offices, personal services, animal services, social assistance, welfare and charitable services. This point, I'll move on to the findings that need to be considered this evening, which have been grouped together for the presentation. Our findings for conformance and consistency require conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan and consistency with the City of Sparks Comprehensive Plan. Starting off with conformance with the regional plan, finding CP1 requires the Comprehensive Plan land use conform with the land use and intensity designation in the regional plan. The subject site has a Tier 1 land designation. Properties in Tier 1 are predominantly developed with a range of residential and non-residential uses, and there are no minimum standards or other limitations for non-residential properties. As proposed, the Comprehensive Plan use change supports the continued use of the subject site for commercial purposes in a location where public services and facilities already exist, which complies with the intense standards for Tier 1. On this slide, we have finding CP2 that requires the Comp Plan Amendment implement the goals of the Comprehensive Plan, and finding Z1 that requires the rezoning to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. The proposed commercial land use designation and rezoning supports a variety of commercial, office, restaurant, institutional uses, supporting goal MG1 and MG2 related to non-residential land uses, land use diversity. The subject site was developed with a commercial building in 1987 and is located in a previously developed area where city services are already being provided at acceptable levels, supporting policy CF1. As outlined in the staff report, the current MF2 zoning does not conform with the adopted IDR land use designation. However, the concurrent requests for each day would bring the site's proposed PO zoning into compliance with the proposed commercial land use and thus into compliance with the city's Comprehensive Plan. Moving on to compatibility, the findings on this slide each focus on compatibility with surrounding land uses, finding CP3 for the Comp Plan land use and finding Z2 for the rezoning. As just discussed, the proposed commercial land use designation and rezoning supports a variety of commercial, office, restaurant, institutional uses. Changing the Comprehensive Plan land use and zoning for the subject site as proposed is compatible with the surrounding land use designations and developed uses that are generally middle-density housing products, including small family or small lot, single-family homes. Properties to the north are designated MF24 and commercial, zoned MF4/POD and C2 or general commercial, and developed with multifamily apartments and commercials and a commercial center, including a grocery store, drive-through restaurants, car wash and retail uses. Site is adjacent to Sparks Boulevard and the placement of commercial uses between major arterial roads, excuse me, and residential uses connect as a buffer between that road and the single-family from potential light and noise impacts caused by the vehicles. Properties to the south are designated IDR and Community Facilities, or CF, zone MF2/POD, SF6/POD and Public Facilities, or PF, and are developed with single-family homes in a park. Properties to the east are designated IDR, zoned SF6, and SF6/POD are developed with single-family homes. And properties to the west are designated IDR, zoned MF2/POD, and also developed with single-family homes. Moving on to finding CP4 and Z3, which require public notice. For both requests, the Planning Commission and City Council meetings function as the public hearings. For the Comprehensive Plan land use amendment, the statutorily required neighborhood meeting was conducted by the applicant on May 31st. Three members of the public attended that meeting. Attendees did express some concern regarding the previous childcare use and the impacts caused by that previous use. In addition, public notice of this meeting was published in the Reno Gazette-Journal and mail notice was provided to 390 individual property owners within 700 feet of the subject property on July 1st. For the last slide, I did include some photos of the site taken in May. In conclusion, staff believes the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment to change the land use designation from intermediate-density residential to commercial and the proposed rezoning from MF2/POD to Professional Office is compatible with the areas surrounding the subject site. Additionally, the requests are consistent with the site being developed with a commercial building in 1987 and being utilized for commercial operations for the past 38 years. Staff is recommending the Planning Commission approve the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the rezoning request. If these requests are approved, staff anticipates the request going before Regional Planning Commission in August, City Council for first reading on September 22nd, City Council for second reading on October 13th. And with that, I'm available for any questions. Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the staff? Does the applicant want to add anything? Can you come up here, state your name, please?
I'm Anya Killings, and I am in the process of seeing the building or hoping to the building. And we're hoping to bring light behavior analysis connect to provide we're searching this particular location. We're really excited about this particular location because it is set up as a childcare, which is very suitable for what we're, what we do. However, given the fact that we're not childcare and we're categorized as medical office we need to seek rezoning in order to know if this helps understanding why we're seeking this.
It does. Sure. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant? Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Kobe. This is a public hearing item, does anybody wish to comment on this particular issue? I see none, I'll close public comment on this. Commissioners, do we have any further discussion? No, Commissioner Reed?
I have none.
Alright, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolution.
Yes.
We haven't done the reason.
Yeah. Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolution number 246, adopting the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment PA 5-0002 associated with PCN 5-008, pending Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation for 2301 Sparks Boulevard from intermediate-density residential to commercial based findings. CP4 and the fact supporting these findings as set forth in staff report.
Alright. Alright, we got a move by Commissioner Pritzos, a second by Commissioner Nieberlein. We'll enter, we'll take a vote. Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Alright, it passes unanimously. Alright, now we'll move on to PCN 25-008/rz25-0002. He doesn't have to do anything, we just, we just have to open it for public. So we just need to open this up for public comment, does anybody wish to comment on this particular item? Alright, I see none, I will close public comment. Commissioners, do we have any further discussion? Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to forward a recommendation of approval.
Second that motion.
Alright, we got a move by Commissioner Kramer, a second by Commissioner Nieberlein. Let's vote. Oh, do we have any more discussion?
No.
No. Alright. Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Alright. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Kobe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kobe. Now we're moving on to PCN 25-0010/ V25-0001.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Scott Carey, Development Services Manager. Before I dive into my presentation, I wanted to make a public disclosure for the record, if you could, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I want to make a voluntary public disclosure. My home is located within the 500-foot noticing radius over on Coupler Court. It's about a half mile, half block away and around the corner from the subject site. I wanted to state that although my home is within the noticing radius, I do not believe that I am materially impacted by the Planning Commission's deliberation on this item. I want to make a voluntary disclosure for the public's benefit to state that I do not believe my judgment as a staff reviewer for this item has been impacted from my home's proximity to the site. Additionally, as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, AICP, I am bound by a code of ethics and professional conduct and the spirit of the code and the principles us as AICP members are bound to uphold. I'd like to publicly disclose that my home is within the noticing radius and to avoid the, in order to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest. With this disclosure being made, I wanted to state for the record that I do not believe, or I do believe that I can continue my review in this case as a staff member based on the evidence presented in this case in a manner and do so in an impartial decision-making capacity. Furthermore, I do not, I do not believe that I stand to materially benefit in any way from the Planning Commission's decision on this. So out of an extreme abundance of caution in the spirit of NRS 278 or 281A and the public disclosure in general, I just wanted to make this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Scott.
So for the Commission's consideration tonight is a variance request over on Union Street. The subject site was, has a single-family home on it that was constructed in 1981. Concurrent on this site is a Planned Unit Development Overlay, similar to the last item you just previously heard. That is an older Planned Unit Development Overlay. In this instance, it was to allow for reduced setbacks in attached single-family products. You can kind of see to the south of the, of the subject site. That, that zero lot line development does not apply to this subject site. Just wanted to explain that PUD overlay. The reason we are here today is there is a variance request to reduce the required rear yard step, to encroach into the required rear yard setback and into the front yard setback. This site is in the SF6 zoning district, which requires for additions to the home, a 20-foot rear yard setback. The currently unpermitted structure is nine feet from that rear property line. In the front, outlined here in Area C, there is an unpermitted addition to the carport that is encroaching into the required front yard 20-yard setback, or 20-foot setback for garages. This case was brought to the Planning Division as a result of a building investigation that was initiated by the Building Division earlier this year. And since that time, the applicant has been working with city staff to obtain a building permit to permit these unpermitted structures. Looking back at the satellite data, staff's interpretation that these structures have been on the site since 2002. There's the unpermitted Area A, which is the subject of the variance request, and Area C in the front. There's also an unpermitted Area B on the rear that's been added that is within the current setback requirements. It's not part of this variance request. Here's some photos provided by the applicant showing, this would be the rear of the property line and showing the addition A area, showing that nine-foot setback to the rear property line. Here's another shot from the applicant showing this rear addition and the nine-foot setback. This wall is part of that Area B that's unpermitted, but it's currently outside the setback. This patio cover, there was a building permit issued for that. It's not part of the subject tonight's meeting. And here's a picture of the front of the, of the property, which shows the unpermitted carport or garage addition in the front that's encroaching into the 20-foot setback. So following the discussion at the Planning Commission meeting, I added a couple slides to kind of explain how municipal code works in terms of allowing flexibility in, in the code standards. There's three processes, the first one is minor deviations. And so those are, or those allow for deviation of any measurable standard in code up to 10%. My apologies, at the Planning Commission Study Session, I said it was from 10 to 20%, only up to 10%. Subsequently, so those are approved at the staff level, no public hearing or notification that's required. The next level is major deviation, and major deviations are allowed by code to provide deviation to the code from between 10% to 50%. And then lastly, we have variance requests, which are anything above 50%. So shout out to our senior civil engineer, Susan Yang, helped me put together these, these slides. In a hypothetical situation where this is a single, we'll say this is a single-family house, they have a patio cover in the rear, outlined here in yellow, and there's a 10-foot setback requirement. So under the, the minor deviation process with a 10-foot setback, they could encroach within that setback through the minor, through the approval of minor deviation up to one foot. With the major deviation, and so that's a public hearing, it does go before this body for consideration. There's different findings that you have to, have to, have to make. That would allow for a maximum of 50% deviation from the codes. You can kind of see the yellow, the patio covers getting a little bigger. And then finally, just to demonstrate, a variance would be anything above that 50% standard. So in this instance, it's probably, you know, three feet away from the property line. Just to kind of visualize that, this process works. So as, as outlined in the staff report, there's a very high threshold and a high bar for variance requests as outlined in Nevada RISE statute as well as the municipal code. Variance requests are designed to be rare in nature and are done for unique circumstances and to deal with the demonstrated hardship. Variance requests are not granted to relieve hardships that are solely personal, self-created or financial in value. Rather, variances are intended to provide relief to individual property owners where the application of code standards would create an undue hardship. Typically, variance requests are granted when there is irregular lot configuration or some sort of a geographical thing on the, on the property, you know, such as a topography or maybe a body of water or something, something in that. One thing I did want to point out, pursuant to Sparks Municipal Code, cost to the applicant of strict compliance shall not be the sole reason for granting a variance request. So there are seven findings for a variance request. These are very rare instances, it's been quite a few years since the Planning Commission's seen, seen a request like this. Staff believes that it cannot make findings V1, V2, V3 and V4. And I will dive into those and outline some of those reasons right, right now. So the first one is exceptional, extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the property. This Exhibit Number Seven here is from the approved final map for the Willow Creek Phase 2 subdivision in 1980. As you can see, it's a pretty regular-looking sized lot. It meets the minimum lot dimensions and size requirements at the time, and it would under today's code as well, too. So it's staff interpretation that this site does not possess any extraordinary or exceptional circumstances. And we believe that the hardship from these unpermitted additions to the home are self-created hardship. Finding V2, a strict interpretation of, of enforcement of the provisions of the code would deprive the applicant of privileges. Staff believes that due to the size and conforming shape of the property, denial of the variance request would not deprive the property owner of privileges granted to other property owners who must comply with land coverage, lot size, height limitation and setbacks of the SF6 zoning district. Therefore, staff does not believe that the strict interpretation of the enforcement of the, of the code would deprive the applicant of privileges enjoyed by other property owners who are complying with standards of the zoning code. Finding V3 is the granting of the variance will not constitute a special privilege. Staff finds that because all properties within the SF6 zoning district are subject to the same standards, granting this variance could constitute a, or grant a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations that are imposed on other property owners within the SF6 zoning, zoning district. This is a photo here taken earlier when this application came in showing the, the unpermitted addition to the front of the house. I will note for the record, this was previously part of the building investigation, these unpermitted roof additions that went to the property line. Those have since been removed by the applicant. And these accessory structures on the side of the house, there are plans by the applicant to remove them next month. The next finding that staff believes it cannot make is finding V4. And so this deals with public health, safety and welfare. The primary goal of setback requirements within the municipal code are to prevent spread of fire between buildings and provide sufficient space for the fire department to respond during, during an emergency to effectively combat fires. Given the fact that the unpermitted structures identified in A and Area C could block either side yard in the manor that could impede the, the fire department, staff believes that although may not substantially, it could impair public health, safety and welfare and doesn't believe that it can meet finding V4. V5 deals with, with natural resources. The site has been developed with a single-family residence and these unpermitted structures for several decades. The site has an intermediate-density residential land use, which is, which is in conformance with, with the city's master plan. Staff believes that the request would not impair availability of natural resources. Finding V6 deals with affordable housing. This various request does involve one single-family residential home. Staff believes that this finding could likely be met, does not. And then finally, the last one is V7, and that's public hearing. Notice of today's public hearing was published in the Reno Gazette-Journal on July 1st. Notices were mailed to 164 property owners within 500 feet of the subject site on, on June, on July 3rd. The Planning Commission meeting functions as a, as a public hearing. So to date, staff has received a total of eight requests or eight public comments. One was a request for additional information. And we have received seven requests in support of the variance requests. One thing I will point out, since the public, or since the study session meeting, the applicant has received, we have received a letter of support from the property owner to the rear of the sub-subject site in support of the of of the sub-subject site in support of the, well, if the applicant speak more and more, I just wanted to point that out, so. Overall, um staff believes that the portions of the house that violate the municipal code setbacks are a result of unpermitted additions, and because of this, compliance with the setback requirements is feasible given the size, shape and dimensions of the subject site. Staff recommends that the planning commission deny the variance request without prejudice. Um, staff understands that the applicant did not undertake these additions and is generally trying to bring the property into compliance, and we look forward to continuing to work with the applicant on that. Um, additional, um, however, based on the information provided by the application and subsequent discussion, it does not appear that there are any peculiar or sexual or exceptional practical difficulties or exceptional or undue hardships resulting from the size, shape and dimensions of the site. And uh, so we are therefore recommending denial. Um, should the planning commission um want to approve this, um, we do have, we have prepared um exhibit eight, which does outline some suggested conditions of approval um to to do so. The intent behind these conditions of approval to make sure that any of these unpermitted additions obtain a building permit to do so. So that's uh all I got on this one, Mr. Chair, be happy to answer any technical questions, and the applicant is here as well.
All right, thanks Scott. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Scott or staff?
The requirement similar to a variance as far as what we would have find, is there a lower threshold or are we still bound by the same restriction of looking at if it's only financial hardship, would that apply to deviations as well?
Yeah, thank you Commissioner, um, in the in the instance of a major deviation, there are four um findings that that are that are required for the planning commission to make. Um, one of those does not include the the demonstrated hardship. It's very similar to a conditional use permit where we're looking at public safety and welfare, we're looking at natural resources. Um, and 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 to in condition to identify, address things, but there's there's just four. Um, so we we feel it's 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 a lower bar at the at the major deviation level.
Services manager Kerry has addressed, just to add a little more context. In the uh zoning code amendment of approximately twenty fifteen is when the major deviation component was added into the Spark Municipal Code, other local jurisdictions have more recently adopted the major deviation in our area as a tool because the variance is so very difficult uh for a staff or a commission to make findings on. So it was a uh it was a tool to allow for some of these extenuating circumstances that were beyond the uh state statute deviation component of a minor deviation, it does call that out, state statute, ten percent is the maximum that the administrator can do without appearing. So it was that uh component of ten to fifty percent that was added. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I if I could just add to to give a little more background on that, the the main difference that I see between a variance and a major deviation as far as the findings need to be made is that the the uh exceptional or undue hardship or the peculiar or uh exceptional practical difficulty is not a required finding of.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Elkins?
And so Scott, at the time that the modifications to the building were made for the setback, the existing, the same thing?
Yeah, thank you Commissioner for the question, that that's a very good question. Um, I'm not, I'm not quite sure, I'd have to go back and look at the at the zoning code requirements. Um, it's my understanding, you know, when this when the subdivision was was approved, there was a twenty foot um setback that was called out for the for the garage. Um, so I believe that was that was called out on the on the improvement plans initially, so that would have been in time, that would have been in place at the time of 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 when these were built around two thousand and two is is our best guess. The rear, I think it's it's probably likely it was it was twenty feet as well too.
Uh, Chair, I believe in the nineteen seventy-six adopt of the municipal code, the SF six approved a twenty foot front setback for a driveway and or for garage in twenty feet. Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
I don't think I was born yet.
I wasn't.
So, any commissioners, do you have any questions for Scott, any more for staff?
I I I, so guess one of the things that I I'm I'm curious, you can't answer this Scott, is when the building permit was issued for the patio cover, nobody looked at anything else? I mean, it's kind of, it's it's like, what did we not, did we not take a look, did we not, did we just issue it because that was there, I mean? Go ahead.
Thank you for the question Commissioner, um, I I I'm not sure, the the record's pretty pretty sparse and looking at that building permit, I I wasn't able to see the the planning staff comments in there, but it was issued and we would consider with that building permit being issued a legal structure.
But nobody looked at any, you know, or was the, was, because looks like the patio cover is attached to the unpermitted part of the house that didn't get a permit either, so. I guess I'm curious to see, did we drop, did we drop the ball?
I'm not sure, I I wasn't part of the
I know you weren't.
The review back then and without the record to 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 go back and look, um.
Uh, next question, so obviously this house has gained square footage um with this. Is this new square, is all of this unpermitted work um taxed?
Good question Commissioner, I I believe so. Um, looking at the original improvement plans and clicking on some similar models within this subdivision, I think the initial uh square footage was something like eighteen hundred and eighty something square feet. Um, looking at the county assessor, it looks like it's it's over twenty-five hundred square feet, so that leads me to believe that the county assessor has been taxing this.
Commissioner Reed, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any more questions for staff?
I think I know the answer, but just for the record, was this brought to your guys' attention by a complaint, or how did this come to your attention?
Yeah, this uh this request came to the department's um attention because of a complaint from the from the citizen.
All right. You you may come up and add to what's what this is. And we may have some questions for you. Thanks Scott.
Just to make sure we have a clean record, you've provided a a pretty long, I'll call it, what you titled it, variance application for ten forty-five Union Street, additional details for public meetings, so everybody got that um outlining your just more background and and arguments in favor of it, so I just want to make it clear that everybody has this.
Paint your name.
Thank you very much, my name is Kerry Morris. And um, I am the applicant for this variance request, and I am acting on behalf of the owner, the sign-in is uh was the owner since the invasion. Uh, yeah, so, let me see, um, can I, yeah. Can I, can I make those bigger or no? I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering. Oh, just there, okay, thank you very much. Okay, um, so, um, okay. Um, I lost my train of thought here, okay, so I'm I'm actually, um, I went to school here, I went to Reed High School um and graduated nineteen seventy-eight, just to give a little bit of background about myself. Went to UNR, graduated in nineteen eighty-two, and I went to San Francisco um in nineteen eighty-nine, moved over to Ireland, I have lived and that was to marry an Irish woman. Um, so I would come back to my mother's home, um normally two or three times a year, when she had a couple of years, I would come home a little bit more often and stay longer. Um, so that's just a little bit of background about me and my connections, parts. Um, okay, I suppose um what I put here was I put together these details because um someone had, one of the commissioners which had asked last session, um, you know, when I was saying that this was going to be undue hardship, and the primary reason why we were making this variance request was because there was no feasible path to actually get into compliance. And I have been working with uh City Spark to get into compliance as much as possible wherever it is feasible. And so I didn't see any feasible path, I'm certainly open to suggestions, uh but from my point of view, I want to get the house in compliance. Um, so one of the questions that came up in the study session was, um, I said that if we are denied this, that the hardship due to us to do uh what we would have to do in the house, the reconfiguration of the house was just going to be massive, was going to be significant. And so I was asked, you know, explain that a little bit more. So in trying to explain that, I thought I would have to show you some of the pictures and some of the history of how the house has actually developed over the years. So this is something that happened, um, if you can look back on Google Maps, it's clearly shown on there, this has been in place for over twenty years. Okay, and you can imagine that when anybody moves into a house, um, they make improvements in terms of how they're living and using the house. And if they make one improvement and then they make another one, that might compound what's happening. Uh, you know, the effect of um the changes onto the house, so it's not like you just make one change and you can easily undo it. You've made one change and then another change and then another change, uh it becomes much, much more harder because the changes become entrenched in the building. Um, okay, so I just want to bring up a clarification, um, first of all, just because this has been brought up a couple of times. Um, about, and and it was actually directly put into um the report. And to be honest, I'm I'm I was actually a little bit surprised because I'm not sure where this comes from. Um, and it 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 states that my uh that our main uh uh reason for applying for the variance cost, and it is not. Um, I have, uh, we have, uh, from the minute that we found out about uh the code violation, we have gone out to try to to uh make amendments and to get into code as much as possible. Um, and uh we have spent a lot of money already, uh it has never, uh, like, I mean, you know, it's never been a first priority on our mind, the first priority on our mind is to make sure that that the house is in compliance in the best way that that we know how to do it. Um, so that has never been uh the uh the main uh reason why, um, you know, we applied for the the variance. Uh, it has not been about cost, so I just explained that we spent five grand, okay, nearly five grand for variance application. Um, when we were told about the uh structures off the side, we spent another five grand to have those removed. When those were were removed, it left the whole side of the building with rough edges. So we are now in the process of fixing that, that is going to cost us six thousand as well. The amount of time and travel that I have spent on this has been massive, absolutely massive. Um, and, you know, I mean, it's it it has been, it has been huge. So, and and the other thing is that when, you know, if um if there are, um, if we are granted the variance, we are more than happy to fully comply with the building. So from our point of view, this, the cost thing has never been our initial consideration at all. Um, first and foremost, has been about compliance and working with the city transparently and in good faith to bring this into uh code. And as I said, if I knew of an easier way, some way to bring the house back into code, I would do it, but I just cannot see it at the moment. Um, the other, the other thing, and I I think Scott had mentioned this, is that somehow maybe the staff feel that this was self-inflicted. Um, this is not something that I did, this is not something that my brother did. This was something that was done over twenty years ago. Um, and I don't know of anyone who thinks of a sense of fairness, who would try to apply um, uh, you know, actions of somebody else, of the previous occupant to somehow making me responsible for this when I am specifically trying to bring this into compliance. This is also not a matter that is just personal to me. Um, if we have to make significant changes to this house, it will no longer become our home. It will become an issue for whoever the new owner is. So I am trying to bring it into compliance. This is, you you know, I I'm trying to work with you, um, it is a hardship that that is going to come upon us uh by removing these structures that have been there for so long. Um, and and primarily because of a lot of the the work that need, the major reconstruction that needs to happen on the inside. And um, the thing about this being a privilege, um, this was another thing that was brought up, so I think I I need to kind of talk around that as well. I don't believe that this is a special privilege because uh these structures have been in place for so long. It's not like we're asking for a new build or anything like that, this is just to try to get get the house into compliance. Um, if we were to take these down, what it will do to the house itself is that it will make the living area um unbalanced, uh disproportionate, the whole living area, the whole common area of the house will be disproportionately large, matched with bedrooms that will be disproportionately small. So as these improvements were made to the house over a period of time, additional improvements were made. So it's not like you even have the original bedroom there, this was a four-bedroom house. That bedroom, if you remove it, then becomes the size of a closet because that bedroom was actually made into an en suite and then a bigger, a much, much bigger bedroom. So you remove that, we remove, we we get rid of that bedroom completely that was used and it was an integral part of the house, that goes. So unless we actually have to remove the en suite as well to get that bedroom back, there there's just so many changes that have happened in the house. So what I'm saying is that, um, you know, this for me is not a privilege because it has been there for so long, it has impacted, like, there hasn't been any complaints as far as we know. And I understand Scott is saying that they received a complaint. I I, you know, I would be more than happy, if I understood what the issue was, I would be more than happy to try to address that. I haven't, no one spoke to us about it. Um, but, you know, um, the the house itself looks the same as any other house in the area. These improvements were made to the back of the house. And I I I feel, I actually feel that we are trying to bring this into code in any feasible way possible, and we are more than happy to do that. Um, but I feel that asking us to take this down is not only, not only not extending us a privilege, but is actually um it is actually penalizing us for something.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um, I I'll just go through this, I'm sorry, so it was built in nineteen eighty-one, four bedrooms, one uh one master, three additional bedrooms. Our mother bought it in nineteen eighty-four, so she changed it over time. Uh, there were only two people in that house, her and her husband, so there was no uh need to have a lot of space. She became an international goodwill ambassador for both the city of Sparks and the state. And it was at that time that she embraced this role and she started making improvements to the house. She purposely remodeled the house to create a warm and welcoming environment in service to that role. What I've done here is I've done just a kind of summary of what it was when it installed, there was, um, so the bedroom one was the original part of the house, it's up in the front, it's a small bedroom. Um, after the bedrooms were added in the back, um, my mom wanted, she figured she had these extra bedrooms in the back, so what she did was she cut into bedroom one to provide a display area, I'll show you. Um, so that bedroom is now smaller. Bedroom two uh was part of the original uh house. Bedroom two was part of the original house. And when she built on to the back, what she did with, with bedroom four was she created an en suite for bedroom two. And then the, the bedroom four is now, has part of the original bedroom, plus the extension, which is the, the structure that was added on. Bedroom three is the master, master bedroom. Now, there were some minor changes, but essentially that one is unchanged. And bedroom four, let's see, so about fourth of that bedroom is part of the existing house. And as I said, it was split between adding an en suite. So the rest of it was actually built twenty years ago. But essentially denial will mean we will lose bedroom four completely. Because it, it just, it just, it literally will be the size of a closet now, unless we remove the, the en suite as well. Bedroom five was added twenty years ago, so denial again will mean we would lose the entire, the entire bedroom. So you can see, see that there's really only one room that was not impacted by the addition of this. And this is what I mean by it, it will take a reconfiguration of the entire house. Okay, so, and, and that, that if you take this off, you're not going to just kind of get a, a normal layout again. Okay, I'll just go into these, so I'll dive into these. So this one is the, the living room. So as you, as you come into the house, this is the living room. This, as I said, she made these improvements to host her parties and functions and fundraising events and things like that. She opened her house to the community. These are, you know, several tables there that she used for, for hosting events. And on the walls, they are adorned with photos that hang of her and her husband taking with presidents from the U.S. and abroad indignatories and awards that she's been given over the years. And also, of course, her prize pictures are those of her children. Then this is the kitchen. So this is kind of to the, if, well, I think about to the front, but it's actually to, as you move to the back of the house. This is the kitchen on the right-hand side. And at the end of the island is a commercial food warming unit. And she used this when she ordered prepared food that she used to buy in bulk and she would keep everything warm there. So there's actually, you know, if you can see it there at the end of the island, it's a silver unit. That is where she kept all of her food. Then there is like a TV, a sitting area, and to the left of that, there is also another fridge. To the right of that is another living room hosting area. It's like a back living area. And again, you can see this is to accommodate more tables. Now, because we removed the structures on the side, we had to bring some of those in. So it's a bit cluttered right now. I literally did not have time to move those things around. But that's what the clutter is at the moment. It's because we removed those based on our voluntary, voluntary, we were very happy to voluntarily remove those structures. And I, yeah, so that is the back living area. Now, this is the display area. So as you come into the door, this is, if you could see, she cut into room one because she had the rooms in the back. So she cut into room one to make a display area here, okay? So room one is smaller, but that's the reason why. It was a small room to begin with, yes.
So she moved a lot of walls inside this house?
Um, yeah, I'd say so, yes. But she has ma- major structures and beams that are still there, yes. Let me see, okay, so then, and just to answer, I, I think it was that Commissioner Kramer was asking about the, the property assessment. Yes, she does pay on the higher, on the higher footage, she does. Let me just see, okay, so on to the bedroom. So this is, this is bedroom one, it is the small bedroom. Again, you know, it's actually smaller than normal because she cut into it. So it's kind of used for storage at the moment. This is bedroom two, and she always says, this is Terry's room, that's my room. That's where I stay when I come to visit. This was part of the original house. To the left of this image is where bedroom four would be. And when the extension was built, she split bedroom four. Okay, this is the en suite. So as I said, that was bedroom four. She split it, so she made part of it an en suite, and then part of it is bedroom, the bigger bedroom four that has the extension. And then this is bedroom three, which is the master bedroom. And actually, because we're going through her estate right now, there's a lot of boxes in there as well. Now, this is, this is bedroom four. Okay, the, sorry, the blue line on there, that is where the house had originally ended. So you can see, this is now part of bedroom four. So bedroom four was turned into an en suite. And if we get rid of that, what we have now is basically a closet. So we lose that entire bedroom, basically, because we lose the entire bedroom. But that, that room is used to, for guests. And it is, it has also been used to accommodate exchange students. This is bedroom five, and this is the guest room. Okay, so in terms of the variance code, so the code authorizes the planning commission to grant a variance for the development of property if it's necessary to prevent or lessen peculiar or exceptional practical difficulties or exceptional undue hardships. And I think this is a practical difficulty, which if it is not granted, will result in a huge hardship. And, and the difficulties or hardships are the result from a strict application enforcement. And, and I think that is exactly, I, when I look at this, I feel like that is exactly what our case is about. A strict enforcement of, of, of the code. Because there are different ways, and I think we talked about it during the study session, of how it can be interpreted about the practical difficulties and the hardships and things like that. It is, it is not a thing of cost that we are coming to you about. It's about the layout and the major reconfiguration that would be required. And there is no practical path, no feasible path to actually sort that. I want to sort this. And so the only way that I can see to sort it is to apply for the variance. And I am more than open to other ideas if there is some other way that we can sort this. So the structures in question have been in place for over twenty years. So the code further states that a particular exceptional practical difficulty may result, so it says may result, in the size, shape, or dimensions of the site. And I know that has been pointed out, that there's no difference in the lot in terms of the size and dimensions and things like that. But it is may. And I, I do believe, when I read that and I, and I thought, okay, may, it didn't say it has to. I feel that relying on that interpretation is relying on a very strict interpretation of the code. The other thing it does say, however, is that it can be, that result from the location of existing structures. Okay, so if I look at some of the existing structures as they are now, the, we have, we have the en suite there. And what we have, if you remove it, is, we, you know, we're going to have a closet. And the only way that we will get back that bedroom is by removing an existing structure, which is the en suite. And so that, I think, clearly represents what is allowed for the variance in the, in the code. Okay, let me just see here. Okay, and then, and then I suppose finally, the one thing I had, and I had mentioned this before, was that we are, the, the difference between the major deviation, which we were told would most likely be granted, and the variance is a difference of one foot. And I, I asked, I asked, you know, I have asked that that be taken into consideration. And I understand the job of the planners is to enforce the code. And I'm sure it must be difficult because I'm sure they must be getting people all the time who aren't happy. But the thing is, I also feel that that is a strict enforcement of the code. Because it's not, you know, I, I, I feel that we're very, very close as well. So I feel that there are strict enforcements of the code on several levels. And so I think that when you take them all into consideration, that that is actually, I think it's very apparent anyways, that it's, that this kind of, that this code for the variance is something that was meant for our type of situation. Okay, and then here I had gone over the cost thing, so I won't go over that again. Okay, this was just the thing about the findings for approval. So it says that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances. And I would say that not every zoning, not every property has gone through the sort of long-term, purpose-driven modification that we have, that my, my mother has done. That has significantly, the house has been significantly altered because her role is a longtime occupant and an international goodwill ambassador for the City of Sparks. She hosted all these, these events. And over decades, the, the layout reshaped, not, not for expansion shape, expense, expansions sake, sorry, but to support her role in her service to the community. And the additional bedrooms with the en suites were for guests and exchange students. The extended living areas, like, there's only two people there. They don't need that size of a house. These extensions were done in her service to the community. And even the specific design elements that she had put in the house were, were therefore hosting. And they've been fully integrated into the structure of the house and the functionality of the home. So I think these are exceptional conditions specific to this property that you don't see in most properties. And as such, I, I feel again that they, that they justify the need for a variance. It does not say, the code does not say that these circumstances can only apply to topography. We have already moved these structures in the spirit of compliance and transparency. We've been open the entire time. And as I said, like, at the moment, I, we don't see a feasible path to get into compliance with this area. So section two is that strict interpretation of enforcement law would deprive the applicant of privileges enjoyed by owners of other properties. And I feel that owners of other properties, they enjoy sort of a balanced, well-proportioned, proportioned living space, which we actually have at the moment. But if we, if we, if it's denied, we won't. Because we'll have extra-large common areas and very small bedroom areas. And so it's, it's, it is actually, it, it's not, we are not actually enjoying, you know, the benefits that other people would have in the area because of that. Okay, the variance would not constitute a grant or special privilege. I think I already talked about that. So, okay.
Wrap this up a little bit for us?
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, I think I'm nearly there, okay, so. So there's just a couple of letters of support, and I would just say, those who are directly impacted by that have come in with their letters of support. There's also two additional ones here. And then I just show you some, some information here about her role in supporting the City of Sparks. This is when she was appointed the international ambassador for the City of Sparks under Mayor Jim Spoo. This was a special congressional recognition she got from Senator John Ensign at the time for her role, for the work that she was doing. She organized, she became, she put together an organization called the International Goodwill Ambassador Circle. And that was basically to pull together several people, they were mostly business people, who were there to support her in her role in supporting the community. And they did lots of fundraising events. So you can see, this is one event in particular after the death of a former governor Kenny Gwynn. She raised money for the Kenny Ginn Memorial Millennium Scholarship Fund. And then here is recognition for goodwill functions in her home. She was heavily supported by Mayor Gino, Gino Martini, who passed away two years ago. She also was very grateful for the support of Cindy Bogan. So these were just some of the pictures taken in her own home. More pictures here, takes around the, the kitchen table. This is a letter that we received from Joe Dutra, who's the president of Kimmy Candy, International Candy Company, who has been to my mom's home several times. And he, he brought in this letter of support as well, saying how she has used the home to welcome people. Then we got this one as well today from Karina Black, who is the executive director of the Northern Nevada International Center. And again, just confirming how our mother's home was opened to the community. Our mother was also a member, her and her husband were a member of Suratoma International, and they were also life patrons because they believed in, and were committed to a life of service. In terms of the Nevada Veterans Memorial Plaza, you'll see that my, my mother, she's listed right there under the gold, the, the major donors. And you'll see the City of Sparks, I'm sorry, it's on the other side, she gave more than the City of Sparks. So, you know, she has been a big supporter of this community. And even all the changes that she made in the house were in support of the community. This is actually, she got the Republic of Taiwan, Republic of China Friend of Foreign Service Medal Award. This is the highest honor that can be bestowed on a civilian. And this was the work that she did between the governments. She actually was one of the main people who helped to set up the sister-city relationship between Taichung and Reno. I think I'm just about at the end here. Let me just see. That was just on her younger years again, as the, the city is ambassador here. So my variance request, I, I won't go over that. I, I just wanted to clarify again some of those things. And I think it's just really important here about the city awareness. They were, we were told that they were very aware of this. And I, I, I just think that when this, this is this retroactive sort of enforcement now, when these, when they, when the city was aware of this and nothing actually happened at that time, it, it feels like there's a bit of a bite, I have to say, especially when my mother provided so much service to the city and to the community. Okay, so just, just that we're doing everything in good faith. And I would respectfully ask for the commission to, to recognize the exceptional circumstances in this case, to consider the hardship that will result directly from the very specific and particular interpretation of the, the code, and to consider the impact on the livability and usability of the home. And if you have any questions, I, I thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for Terry? On it now, or?
I just wanted to thank other service, thank you. And for your family services, very much appreciated. Thank you very much, thank you.
Got a question. I know this is a long time ago, but do you know if this work was performed by a licensed contractor? And was there an engineer involved when the walls were taken out? Because that's concerning to me, just knowing earthquakes in the area and everything like that, that. Do you know who the work was performed by?
I don't, I don't, because it was a long time ago. And as I said, like, I live in Ireland, so like, as I said, like, I don't even know. Like, a lot of times I come back and it's like, oh, you did this, you know? I actually don't know. But I, as I say, we are more than happy, if you want to have, if you want to require us to have an engineer look at it, more than happy to do that, I'm more than happy, I want to make sure that it is safe. And I think that was one other thing, I think that Scott may have brought up, and for some reason I didn't catch it from last Tuesday, was the thing about safety. I thought I had heard from a previous report that they were actually fine with that. Yeah, so I, you know, I, I, I can't imagine, especially with the structures coming out, that those should be an issue. But I thought, I thought the report from the fire department was that it.
Would you be open to taking like three feet off the back of the house to get you under fifty percent variance? Is that something that you had discussed with staff, or?
You know what, I, I spoke to, I actually spoke to my, my brother about that today. I said, you know, it sounds crazy, I've never heard of it. I said, but is that a possibility?
Because of the way the house is pitched, I think it would be.
Okay.
I'm not an engineer, but I would.
I would be happy to look into it, I'm more than happy to look into it. And as, as I said, from our point of view, we want to be transparent, we want to work with you, and also we want everything to be safe.
Thank you. Any more questions, Commissioners? Any more questions, Commissioners? No? Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing item. And anybody wish to speak can speak to this. And I have a request to address the planning commission from Sylvia Calclo. And I apologize for butchering your name. So you're more than welcome to come up.
My name is Sylvia Calclo. My husband Jeff and I are residents, two next door, we're to the north of our house. The only concern that we have for the addition is that the electrical and the drainage is up. That's the only concern we have.
Electrical and drainage. Is that it? All right, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this particular item? I see none, I'll close public comment. Commissioners, do we have any further questions on this?
I have a question for Scott.
For Scott, okay.
So in Exhibit 8, number four, unpermitted structures identified as Area A and Area C and attachment shall obtain a building permit and comply with all applicable building and fire codes. That was confusing to me. So if there, if there's no changes to the buildings, do they obtain a building permit? And have inspectors come in and check it out to leave the structures as they are? Is that what that means?
Yeah, thanks Commissioner for the question. Scott Carey, Development Services Manager, for the record. I believe the intent behind Condition 4 is to make sure that the areas that are covered under this variance request, should the planning commission want to approve them, would obtain a building permit. Through the building permit, we, staff would ensure that the building code and fire codes are being met. I will note, we did leave out Area B. But as part of that process, we've worked with the applicant to make sure that that area is properly permitted.
Okay, thank you.
Here, could I make a comment?
Please.
I have no predisposition as with the planning commission, a vote on this. Staff's recommendation has been outlined. With that recommendation, as with all the public hearings, as you've seen tonight and previously, outlines a motion where they make the case for finding. Should the planning commission not want to support staff's finding, each commissioner will have to identify how each finding is met because staff has explained how they are not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any more questions for Scott? Do we have any further discussion on this? And Scott, you said that there's a couple of approvals, you said, that have been written?
Conditions of approval.
Conditions of approval, sorry.
It's Exhibit 8.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, should the planning commission, you know, want to approve this, staff has prepared an alternative motion to that effect. And then there are conditions of approval outlined in Exhibit 8 there. I was given a notice of typo on Exhibit 8. In Number 2, there's mention of administrative review, where this is a variance request. We look at these things a lot, we missed that, sorry, sorry, Mr. Chair. But the big thing is, should the planning commission want to approve this variance request, we would ask that on the record, the commission make comments of how they believe that the findings can be met. Staff does not believe findings V1, 2, and 3, and 4 can be met. But certainly, it's at the discretion of the commission, you know, to have an alternative opinion. And we'd ask that you do your best to formulate that on the record. And this is the alternative motion, should you want to go that route.
And I can add, if anybody wants to discuss a possible motion, we could take a recess. And for whoever is going to take a motion, just discuss how to put those findings on the record.
Anybody want to take a recess to kind of discuss this?
I'm going to tell you right now, I'm not inclined to approve. I'm inclined to side with staff on this. Because I feel for the applicant, I do. I have empathy for you, ma'am, I really do. But if we grant this variance, we are setting a precedent for everybody in the city that can come back to us and say, well, you did this for this applicant, and now I want to do this, this, and this. And they're going to come back to us with unpermitted work that has been done. And now they're going to ask us for forgiveness when in fact, we've already done it once. And then, and I believe we leave ourselves wide open for, down the road, for legal. And it's not a pretty picture. And unfortunately, for you, your mom did all of this work. And as much as of work that she did, it was wonderful to be able to accommodate what she was doing at the time. And I understand that. But as the chair said, your mom moved a bunch of walls. And I get that. Walls can be put back as long as structurally, the structure of the building was not harmed in the moving of those walls. I just, we would provide you with a special privilege that we haven't provided anybody else. And that's not, and to me, unfortunately, you got stuck with what your mom did, like a lot of us do when our parents end up dying. We get stuck with the things that they've done, and we have to fix it as their children. It's not the best place to be in, but it is, it's a reality for all of us. I cannot, under good conscience, say to approve a variance. I just, I can't do it.
So I just want to echo a lot of what Commissioner Kramer said. I can't personally speak to finding before, but I can't find V1, 2, or 3. I think that this, like Commissioner Kramer said, would be setting a precedent of ask for forgiveness, not for permission. And I also understand your point of view, but I'm, I think that the interpretation of special privilege, the way that I'm interpreting it, is that not every house in that area has these additions. And if we're just saying, well, they've been there for 20 years, so be it, then that is a special privilege because not everybody else is enjoying the additional acreage or the additional rooms. And so for those reasons, I agree with Commissioner Kramer. And I can't find, I can't come to finding V1, 2, or 3.
All right. Are we done discussing? Commissioner Reed, do you have any comments?
No, only that I do agree with Commissioner Kramer and Commissioner Prentzow that I do not find that there's any reason to go against staff. And conditions V1, V2, V3, V4 cannot be met. So I won't be voting in favor of this.
Okay. All right. I will entertain... Pardon me?
You'd like your discretion, Chair.
No, we got enough information that you provided us, so I think... Yes.
We don't want to ever hear from this again, but when we're doing it without prejudice, that we're saying that you can continue to work on this, but...
That's correct, Commissioner. It's kind of a procedural thing outlined in the variance section of code. If the commission, you know, there's their discretion. If you were to deny it with prejudice, they could not come back. I believe it's six months. But without prejudice, they can continue working with us and with staff to find...
I understand.
So I have another, I have a follow-up to that. So if the applicant were to remove three feet from the back of the house, they could come back to us with a conditional use permit, is that correct?
It would be a major deviation.
A major deviation. They could come back with that to us.
Yes.
Okay.
Good question.
Pardon me? Real quick, like, come on up, state your name. And I'll give you one minute.
Terry Morris, the applicant. Yeah, so I would like to propose, if possible, that you would grant variance subject to a condition of a removal of two or three feet, whatever you require. And I, like, I'll leave it at that if you want. But I would also say in terms of setting a precedence, they have to show undue hardship. And I think you have to make the case. So I don't think that has precedence either. That's what is actually allowed for in the law.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Scott?
Here are the commission's alternatives. You know, you can deny the variance with or without prejudice. You can approve the variance with such conditions of approval. You can approve it with new conditions of approval. Or if you can continue or table the item if you'd like.
So with what Commissioner Spurber said, Commissioner Kramer said, if we do this right now, they could still work with you guys to figure out how to make this work without destroying their house.
I believe that's correct, Mr. Chair. You know, we just heard from Terry, and maybe the opportunity to reduce the size of the encroachment and the required setback. Should you deny it, we can continue working with them and maybe come back with a major deviation request.
Okay. I think we're good with that. Commissioners, do we have any further discussion? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to deny variance V25-0001 without prejudice based on my inability to make findings V1 through V4 because the property in question does not present unusual size, shape, dimension, or topography, or otherwise demonstrate that compliance with Sparks Municipal Code setback requirements present a peculiar or exceptional practical difficulty or exceptional or undue hardship.
All right, we got a move by Commissioner Kramer, a second by Commissioner Niebelon. Any further discussion? All right, let's vote. Commissioner Reed?
I have no additional comments.
Okay. Can you vote?
Oh, sorry, I can't hear from the far end. I vote in favor of not approving the, without prejudice.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Reed. All right, the motion passes unanimously. All right, we'll move on to...
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
And thank you for coming.
And thank you, ma'am.
Do we have any announcements? No announcements? All right. This is, I'll open it up for general public comment. You can comment on any item. Does anybody wish to speak? Okay, I see none, I close public comment. All right. Any staff comments, or?
Hey, Chair, I have one that I thought of, an item that is coming up to the next Spark City Council meeting. I think that's on July 28. Staff is working on an item called Main Street USA. It's an item that comes through Carson City. Development Services Carey is leading up that project. It's some funding and components that help with reinvigorating downtown. So our downtown may be interested in what we present and the council votes on on July 28 regarding downtown. Reno has used it a few times, I believe Minden has used it. So some of the communities in Northern Nevada have used. I think it's an exciting step for our downtown, our Victorian Square.
What's it called?
Main Street USA.
Are we changing the name from Victorian to Main Street?
That's not, that's not part of the plan.
Have to change all your marketing.
All right. Thanks, Jeff.
Yes.
All right. I'll adjourn this meeting.